...
...
...
...
Pretty good.
... Marilyn, uh, Jeanne Witten?
Here.
Marilyn Timmons? Betty Childers?
Here.
Lynn Witten?
Here.
Matthew York? Paul Watson? Diane Chauvin? At this point you do not have a form, however you can continue if you do not put on anything. At this point we will move to the legislative agents.
..................
At this point sir I'm not prepared to prepare any more. At this point I'm not ready to prepare any more. Councilor? If you have, if you have to talk. Do you have me?
Aye.
You tell me where? That will support and constitute the United States. Constitution of the State of Missouri. And the orders of the city. And that will meet all the requirements. You serve in this office at the time.
To serve in this office at the time.
In the three states of the state. And I will, and I will fulfill faithfully as man of means myself in this office. Mean? Of Alderman? Which I pledge the fifth day of April two thousand sixteen.
Fifth day of April two thousand sixteen.
Thank you. Jeanne Witten?
Here.
Debbie Herring?
Here.
Betty Childers?
Here.
Paul Watson?
Here.
Wayne Brad? You have a form sir.
Thank you. As we have a form this is now a full meeting of the Dixon City Council. At this point I would like to address that we have two resignations from the city council at this time. This is Marilyn Timmons who has resigned for health reasons. And Mr. Wayne Witten who is also a step back. He had, had won his election, however he is chosen at this time not to be sworn into office. I would like to take the opportunity to thank each of those individuals for the dedication that they have to our city and to their nature. They did a very difficult job during a very difficult time. Our citizens should thank them for their performance exemplary without the ill done job of the other. Then the city marshal. At this point I'm going to let our city attorney, Brian Scott, address the city council. She has an opinion, ideas given.
Someone asked me to look at some different issues and ideas with all the elected and with Mike. And really, this is my advice, my opinion what's going on. I think the important thing to know is that the council needs to think about this and also do what the law requires them to do. To not, not be hasty, not pressurize, not follow the law, what they are allowed and cannot do. First off, in the Missouri state statute, it implies six ten, it defines the city marshal. And we support the powers for the city marshal. One of those powers is to make and order arrests. But that section five ninety zero one zero point one says that someone is commissioned, a peace officer, when they are given the power to make arrests. And under five ninety zero one zero point three, a peace officer is a law enforcement officer with the power to make arrests. Therefore where the city marshal is, Dixon, Missouri, is defined under the statutes as a peace officer. The hitch is in five ninety zero two zero point one. It says that no person shall hold a commission as a peace officer without a valid peace officer license. On January twentieth of this year, the director of the Department of Safety for the state of Missouri issued a temporary suspension on Mr. Plummer's license. Therefore to square it at this time would need to grant him a commission which has been denied by the state. Under the city ordinance two hundred point two zero zero, it says the city marshal is to be the chief of police. Under two hundred zero one zero, it says the department is made up by the chief and the full-time patrolman. Under two hundred zero six zero, it says that every member of the police department shall have the power to make arrests at all times. So under the city ordinance, it also gives forth the power and says the marshal shall have the power to make arrests at all times. This is in contradiction to section five ninety oh one oh, when it says you must hold a peace officer's license to make arrests. And the, the, the other problem here is that under five ninety one nine five point one subsection two, it makes it a crime to grant or continue the commission of a peace officer who is not validly licensed to be a peace officer for the commission. And if one does that, they are guilty of a class B misdemeanor. And if one accepts the position of a peace officer without the valid license, they're also guilty of a class B misdemeanor. It is also understanding that there's been a warrant filed by the prosecuting attorney of Plasmin County. And that there was a judicial order that was entered this, well, within the last two hours. And that, so there is a current judicial proceeding going on regarding the ability to seat Mr. Plummer in this seat. It is by advice that the council reviews these issues, looks at this, and looks at the court for guidance. Especially with the current legal issue pending before decisions made. And it is also by advice that if you're required to seat him, you must seat him and you must follow the law.
Sheriff Paul?
Mike, as a freshman can you share and also serving at the court and the serving of this program?
Sheriff?
Yes. Done now. Yes sir?
At this time, the city of Dixon, Missouri has chosen not to seat Michael K. Plummer. At this time with some serious legal concerns about his ability to serve as a peace officer and the city marshal, as well as the potential issue that may be a criminal act for anyone to administer the oath to him. Mayor's office of the city of Dixon is in full support of the Plasmin County prosecuting attorney Kevin Gilman and his filing of the petition in court of martial law. And we believe that there are legal considerations that need to be addressed and determined before the city of Dixon can administer the oath of office to Michael Plummer. The judge assigned to the case has entered a preliminary order allowing Mr. Plummer ten days to respond, to respond to the petition in court of martial law. Chief among these issues is the fact that the city marshal has the power to arrest. Pursued to section eighty five point six one zero revised Missouri statutes. As such, he is a peace officer as defined in section five ninety point zero one zero point three revised Missouri statutes. The city of Dixon, Missouri is committed to following the letter of the law in all situations. And especially in this situation when it comes to the head of our police force. For these foregoing reasons, the city of Dixon has chosen not to seat Mr. Plummer at this time pending legal issues that will have to be sorted out in a court of law. At this point, we will be moving on to the next item for business.
If I may, just two brief questions. Mr. Plummer was not provided any of this information, was he beforehand?
I'm sorry.
Was there a reason that Mr. Plummer or myself was not provided with any of this information beforehand?
You received that after 5:00 this evening.
I'm gonna add, your presentation that you made in America, that you weren't going to see this evening. I think courtesy will intimidate you. Maybe we received some type of notice at court tonight? That's all. You don't have to respond. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, finishing business here. Donna Irvin has a question to address the council about. Donna Irvin, here.
May I come forward just a moment? I am submitting a petition from all my neighbors on the sewer line that came from there. We were granted these ordering here, it's signed by all my neighbors, six of the seven. I know this is not nearly exciting, what we did doing.
Hey, good to meet you, man. Your hill con was here.
Yeah, I was just visiting your circus.
Thank you, sir.
Can't hear you.
I talked to John Bolger's engineer. John, are you here? John and I have walked that one. What our plan would be, we have to get to, make some time to, is to take the community's line out. John, please represent us, Ron. We will. Directly to the city.
We can't hear.
I have that with the mayor, that position he has.
Six inch or whatever it is there. In the interim, I'm gonna request that we probably camera this thing if we can. Take some video to see where the problems are so we can. I think we went in last year down low, level where your structure is.
Yeah, you're right. That's why.
We would like to make a, get a video of that. Business. Make a, a temporary, what we're doing these easements, kind of off random theme. If we can replace those sections, they just aren't temporary. Or we get the easements done. We have files as well. If, 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 okay.
I got files.
Okay, on your fore end? So allow some time to do that.
Can you start a expedition, please?
Yeah, I think that's what. We have already accounted, you can start the cameras. Actually, give us a chance to basically go through and measure distances of where the. Maybe just make those sections further out. These ones would be starting as soon as you have, because are granted right up to that.
And you provide those easements to us?
We will, but we'll be taking suggestions, but it's noteworthy, we dropped those easements off at City Hall. People make sure of filing them up. Sure, sure. We're all, uh, just asking you guys to come by City Hall and deal with the cane. We've actually been to. You guys, we will go ahead and take order, and actually, you guys are not going to.
Mr. Plummer, I'm not sure if I can go to the only one on that street that has any joint links that it's going to affect. Is that one of the taken out and replaced, or is that my position to replace?
We'll, um, we want to change those things, so I'm gonna try to stay away. You know, I know. Yeah. Uh, the main that we're gonna, because they have kids on the scots. We're gonna, there's a main that runs from, uh, several, uh, roads, several, uh, they're all six and a half street. The main are in the tribes and that's, uh, that may. The line that you guys are currently connected to actually runs between your offices, um, Davis Drive and, uh, Country Club. It runs between there, it's about, say, you're between five and seven, it's very crowded right now. And it favors the houses, I'm gonna say all over the country, so it favors that direction. So I'll just design, we'll probably position these easements where we can try to do at least the amount of stuff that we can. I don't like changing things. We're gonna probably do, we're gonna extend easements. And then just allows you access to a lane. We'll probably try to design the lanes, the other side of the. Allow me to pull it over to where it. And the main will run in its current location. I said, we'll probably go through that, that, those are all that runs through there. Top of the hill there, Scott used to live there. It was one side or the other of that house, then getting that common boundary of property line. Somewhere in there, something like that. This is, this is the plan. Did you give a copy of that letter to the council? Since you have that people that.
I did, I gave it a sign. That we would get all the vitamins.
We're gonna move forward later. We've got to take control of our budget, as we had other considerations that came up. But it is, it is on, John and I have dropped a lot of things to do. So as soon as we, with the budget, allocate some resources.
Okay, that's what I'm gonna do this. Do I have to continue paying for rubber for your jobs in the meantime?
I think we will try to, I think we're gonna try to actually, once we get easements signed, we can camera it without a need to, and I can camera all issue elements from it. And I'd like to start the texture property, because here's the upstream end of that line.
Right.
And then we go down, okay? So that's not an issue. And we get these, which work in the back now, get those signed, we're just gonna mark it off where the trouble spots are. I think we can minimize the issue by replacing pie, sections, you know, we're down, say you go a hundred foot, you get this root ball, that's coming back. And we have greatly helped downstream. And that will not be the final thing here. I think we're gonna take ownership and easements for ownership. Going to have to start, start the easements on a no add item approach. It'll be a process, I hope it's a very difficult process.
We just don't want to forget.
You have absolutely no.
Because, you know, like I said, it's friends here, my grandparents. You know, each other, it's nice to get near something, that's where we're going.
Thank you. Next item. At this time, so let it go up, state agents report, Mr. Rob Ward, you here? Bobby?
Yeah, there are rumors that for country greetings and the water shut offs, the water samples and that. Since Josh is making up through the water sample, we have not had bad samples come back. Our dailies, trash and dumpsters, including the. Basically, we've been getting ready for the road project, which they started last week. We've been doing three roads. We've had some complaints on the show and the steam. And one thing with the road, that's gonna be. We've had all the students do their, and they didn't cover the, the basic countries, once in a while. So with the water meter from inside the truck, let's drive in to the outside, so we can access it at all times. And we've been sweeping streets a little bit with the can with head rock. Working on City Hall, working on the jailhouse. We've made it where, if I want to go around, we'll help us out and make sure they're at the shake. Running a little bit of rock, had a new eight cylinder trash truck. Carl Brooks with his last day, went first, moved the two panels where he had insurance and stuff. There was a spark, they were spotting them with blood rush and snakes and stuff, and took it out. Here's some snakes over here, so we're probably. Prevented the presence on Friday. I've got a few items that I've got permission to sell, and perhaps use that money to the county police. Our guys, we've got the bottle, everything else we have to drop in this. One's not very tall, but that guy. A lot of gas running that truck, hanging high in, we got to lift it, it's out like this. The two pair of vehicles, it's, this is going out of there, and we did cross the river, and get it back on the road and work. So it ended up for all fifty. The one time that this weather been down, and you first put it off.
For those of you that don't know what that one's idea is.
How do you drive it?
You can't open the door or anything, and I was able to take my hands and put it, the windshield out. Going down the road, so we got that to the shop, that's probably not to put anybody in that vehicle. But I would pass it to safety inspection, or we get rid of it.
We're gonna, if we're allowed to sell it, I'd like to take the bed and hydraulics off of it, so we can put it on whatever we drive. Then it's. We have a large gas powered air compressor that, to my knowledge, is standing, sits around behind that old shop. It's just not beneficial for us, to get money out of it. The old lighting bay, it's got issues, we can sell it to somebody. And there's an old snowplow around there, scrap metal, not with a chrome or something. And we have a backup that's a bobcat, we use it now and again, we don't use a lot. We can sell it if it's needed. All I've got.
I guess that we, uh, authorize selling, uh, surplus, not any items, we'll allow a bit. Well, what I would like to see is a, something in writing, uh, and a better, a couch with a load on it. And sideline items, whether or not to surplus those items, and if we can take profit out of it.
Now, is there any orients or anything that will not allow us to put that money into a special account for like the one ten?
Um, now I'll have to check on, uh, we're talking about your marking those funds specifically for the replacement of, you purchase a one ten. I don't know any ordinances, I mean, allow, or disallow, however, I will have an answer.
Do you have an estimate of how much all of this will weigh? If you, if you worked to.
I do not, and Jeff McMillan, somewhere in very close, he runs an auction site. He could probably give, uh, estimate on how much there is in the courts and on the weekends.
Alright, thank you, Robbie. Next item on the agenda is city engineer John Bolger. What's that? John?
Just wanna update the new council members. You guys are aware of the, uh, a lot of sort of work down the last couple of years, along with water line extension. Those projects are complete and a meal of a roadway project or road proofing project. Slash BK, about forty percent of our road later down. Started that in the fourth, and we have, um, world scandal. Actually, doing very well right now, I have, we have red blood, two hundred club roads, three six street. It started and perled, and that's just partial for, and also the other perled, what I call south perled. Okay, um, right across street by the middle school. Those roads are dependent on, not, not a hundred percent, we're gonna put some base along the edges of those roads to cement, but asphalt. Correct, Ellen Street right now, we did the street, see some on Coast Street. So there's, we're just beginning this process of the road.
I'm going to get that shelter.
Well, my is going to suck this up.